Okay, it is Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. We'll call me into order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn.
Okay, minutes and reports received and filed.
The sheriff, reporter, and clerks.
Okay, Commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
I don't think I have anything besides Easter coming up.
It's chaos Friday.
I have, I have left a message for John. I've emailed him twice and I haven't heard anything back, so. Yeah, I sent him one today. I said, well, I didn't, I didn't hear anything, so I'm assuming we're not, so I thought maybe that would get him, but.
Probably be over the phone. I think that's the way most of theirs have been.
Yeah, oh, they are. They're all, yeah, yeah.
So it's not like we couldn't stop or do something if he was.
Yeah.
The only thing I got is maybe radio without daily on Saturday, so.
I got a United Way conference call at 11:00 a.m. I get, we got the policy group at 1:30 with John, with the sheriff. First time we got the EOC briefing, and then at 1:30, we're doing another thing down at the police station. Policy group on Thursday, EOC briefing Friday, Easter, that's all I got. Okay, commission comments. Bids and contracts, signing of outdoor warning consulting sole source.
This was the siren that went out in, out of Centertown or is going in?
Going in, yes.
So this is a sole source document. It would run in the paper. Sorry.
I just talked to Brian for a little bit. Probably next week install on that. We got their last money to pick the site out, so it'll be a really nice.
And this is just approving the sole source.
Right. I move that we sign the sole source advertisement with, for outdoor warning consulting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Signing of merchants application with Central Bank.
So this is a contract to allow people to pay with credit card for their board bills, and it will go directly into the board of prisoners line on our budget. No cost to us.
I move that we sign the merchant application with Central Bank.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any unfinished business? New business accounts payable review.
I asked for approval of accounts payable pending review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second final reading of budget adjustment number three.
The court order here. Oh, June.
Thank you. This is for the $556,956.78. This is that new way of billing over at the EMS department that we talked about last week.
You've got to sign that, right?
Yes.
I move that we sign court order number three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Spray logger sole source advertising approval.
This is just getting approval to put this out for sole source. This is for Public Works. It's the spraying device, and it's got a GPS system on it. And it works with their existing system too, so it's just putting this out for bid. I mean, I'm sorry, not putting it out for bid, putting it as sole source in the paper if you so agree.
Run the sole source advertisement for it.
Yes.
I move that we run the sole source for spray logger.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion of Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
Okay, well, this was the new law that went into effect April 1st. Since you guys the information on it, the big question is county government or anybody could actually exempt emergency workers from this. Basically, it's, it's an extension to FMLA, and it's for the coronavirus situation only. And they have to meet the criteria of that, being an employee, to be eligible for it, so it will be a case by case basis to evaluate the documentation that I receive. I am working through Moore Source with helping us get this accomplished. It will also affect the county's 941 filing report. So hopefully BSNA, our software vendor, will have that up and running before we have to submit fourth quarter. So it's quite a big undertaking, but it's the new law, so basically I need from you exempting emergency workers or including them in as part of this.
That would be EMS and the health department.
And there.
Law enforcement.
There is.
You know, the, I've been researching this, and, and of course, what, it just says if you have, like, emergency medical services or provide health services. I don't think law enforcement is part of that. I'll look again at the actual language, but I've been reading a lot of articles and interpretations from employment law firms.
Yeah, if you would, because Moore Source believes that law enforcement is part of it.
Law enforcement. I'll get the exact statutory language.
They were saying healthcare providers, emergency response, law enforcement, correction, employees, that's jail staff, firefighters, emergency medical personnel, 911 operators, public works employees, and other specialty skills and training operation of special equipment could be excluded. But I also heard it was just healthcare, but Moore Source gave this total grouping, so.
So I would need to get the exact statutory language.
I wasn't real thrilled that they had to do this. I mean, I think we would have taken care of our people on our own. I don't think we need the government telling us how to do things. But I, I'm not inclined to exempt anyone from it. I mean, we got people out there in the midst of it, and I don't know why we would exempt them.
There's different wa- wa- levels of exemption. One component of it has to do with people who get the disease or, or are ordered to be quarantined, that kind of a thing. Then there's another provision that people can get up to 12 weeks of paid leave if their kids daycare shuts down. Okay? So, and actually, the first two weeks of that could be unpaid, and then the remaining 10 are two-thirds of their salary.
Didn't it have a maximum dollar amount, though, tied to all that?
Yeah, it does.
On the two-thirds, up to $200.
But my point is.
$200, $12,000.
Was that on the daycare, though, too, or?
Yes.
Seemed like it.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Qualifying for reason number five, which is caring for his or her child through school or place of care is closed, or childcare provider is unavailable due to COVID-19 related reasons.
And this all goes to the FMLA stuff, so if somebody has already drawn FMLA before in this calendar year, they wouldn't be eligible for it. So there's a lot of stipulations that have to be looked at at each particular case. But it is the.
So how do we, so with you, with you saying that, how do we, how do we set policy based on individual cases?
What you're setting policy on is include or not include emergency workers.
So.
That's all I'm asking.
Right, so in the instance of childcare, so if you're an emergency worker, we could exclude you, but if you're, is that what you're saying?
Yes, to all of it, all or none.
Right.
You can choose which part of that you're.
But so, so because of the law, though, if, if you work in, I'm just going to pick somebody, but if you work in the commission office, you would get that benefit based on the new law.
Yes.
But emerg- we could exclude emergency workers.
Yes.
I mean, that.
By law.
That's up to you all. That's your call.
Yes, that's your call.
Just tell me how.
I'm just trying to understand, so.
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, they're thinking someplace like EMS, which is not exactly overflowing with paramedics.
All of a sudden, you have five paramedics taking off three months each because their daycare is closed or the, or schools closed.
Well, but in the same instance, so. I mean, if a facility was out of PPE and, and all their people didn't show up because they didn't have stuff for, to protect them, I mean, you know, if you were required to work in, in a, in a setting where you were taking care of people that had COVID and you didn't have any PPE for them, I mean, I wouldn't come to work. I'd be like, sorry. You know, whether you're going to pay me or not, you know, I don't really care, but, you know, if you can't protect me or give me some level of protection, I, you know, why should I put my, my safety for somebody else if, if I don't have any protection at all? I mean, you may not have a mask, you may not have gloves, you may not have face shield or, or anything, so.
I don't think that's what this really.
Right, but I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's included more.
I mean, you know, like.
It's similar, I mean.
Two has, has been advised by healthcare provider to self-quarantine, so is experiencing COVID-19 symptoms. So I think the only one that really would be the childcare, and I know with our EOC briefings, we're trying to find, and we have had some daycares and stuff that have offered to take family, you know, children from our emergency people, so.
And they have to show documentation that their daycare is actually closed, and there's a form they would have to fill out with all that information on it. I, I don't know. I, I assume most of them are closed around here, but I don't know that for a fact.
I don't know either.
So, I mean, I, I'm just talking. I mean, what do you guys think? It's hard for somebody to come to work if they don't have somebody to take care of their kids, regardless of what job you're doing.
So is it their daycare or is there no daycare available? Because I think there are daycares being made available to emergency personnel. I mean, that's just one part of it, if, obviously, if they're in an isolation order.
We don't want them here.
No, if they're, if they're.
That one's.
Anything like that.
Um, if you. Uh, which one was it where you just said that you're supposed to self-quarantine? Well, I went out of, I went outside of the four county area, so now I got self-quarantine for two weeks, and you're going to pay me. Oops. So.
Yeah, it'd have to be by a healthcare provider. So I suppose you need to, Debbie, would the form require doctors' notes or whatever?
Yes, it, it says that.
Well, it don't matter for whatever reason. If you went outside this area, they're going to say, well, you went outside the area, so you need to self-quarantine for two weeks. So, well, I'm going to go down to Camden County around the lake in Mushroom Hunt, then I'm going to come back and have two weeks off. I know, that's a stretch.
Well.
Well, so I mean.
I just, I don't want it being taken advantage of.
Right.
I want to work with them, and maybe we just take each individual instance. If somebody wants to do it, and I think we need to.
Well, I think we could have done that had they not passed some silly law that, you know, allows you to exempt one or another, but, I mean, obviously, that's what we told everybody, is that we're willing to work with you on an individual basis, based on circumstances, but now we get something thrown at us, and now we got a, I mean, if Public Works guy goes down to Camden County in Mushroom Hunts, yeah, he gets two weeks off because that's the law.
Well, it has his doctor to ask.
Well, yeah, maybe he went with his doctor.
Well, this is, if he has been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine related to COVID-19, so I would think that's going to be more like if you.
Have you read the order? That's what it says. If you go outside of the area, you travel outside of the area, then you should self-quarantine for 14 days.
The adjoining counties. If you go outside, you.
Outside of the adjoining counties, so.
That's.
It's, I mean, that's just.
That's directed.
Related to it. You have no.
Not the governors.
You have no symptoms, but you went outside the area, and. So.
Now, I'm going by the.
But that doesn't.
Department of Labor's.
Whatever he's saying does not affect what this federal law says, because.
Do you exempt them or can I make exceptions?
Well, so this is a, this is a federal mandate, basically.
Equally.
So you, you know, a state, a state directive can't trump a federal mandate, and if a state health, was it Randall Williams that was saying this? If you traveled, or who was saying?
That's Christie's.
State, oh.
It was a, it's a, it's the Cole County.
Christie's, Cole County's order.
Well, health department.
Right.
Yeah.
You can only go to adjoining county?
If you go outside the adjoining counties, you have to.
They, they recommend that you do.
Now your employees are going to follow you around, Larry. They're going to tell on you. Stay away for two weeks.
No one's going to throw you in jail, Larry.
No, the employees are going to catch him, though, and make him not come back to the office.
They like to do that anyway.
Yeah, that's exactly what they're going to do. So we.
We can only exempt emergency personnel. That's, that's the only thing we could do.
Yeah.
But are you exempting them on the whole thing?
Order.
It's, it's, see, and that's not even right either, because if they, if they got a quarantine order, stay home.
Well.
Well, I think we're.
And that we're going to, we're going to honor. I mean, if in the line of duty.
So we're, we're going to do that.
In the, you know, in the line of duty, if one of John's deputies.
Well, how it, well, how it works is whether we have to give them paid leave in addition to what they already have. So how that would work, yes, if we exempted them, they'd still stay home. If they had a quarantine order, it just would not be Cole County provided pay. It would have to come out of the current sick leave that they've banked, not what the, what the federal law has ordered that is in addition to what they already have. Does that make sense?
See why I'm shaking my head? Yeah, yeah.
And to that point, i- if you include them, their amount that we would pay the two-thirds for the, the two, 80 hours, that would not be a credit on our withholdings because they are not, you could have exempted them, if that makes sense.
So what now?
The amount of credit that you wouldn't receive because these employees are considered exempt, you wouldn't get reimbursement for them.
From?
No matter what you did, from the feds.
From the feds.
What it is, is you can take it off of your share.
Yes.
Of federal withholding. That's their way of sort of reimbursing you.
Yes.
I still think I'm. Unless you guys think differently. I mean, I'd love to hear your comments, but, I mean, it just don't seem like it's, it's right to exempt people that are out there working hard front, you know, on the front lines. I don't, I don't anticipate people taking advantage, but, I mean, there's always that select one or two that, that may, but. I don't know how you make rules based on somebody that's going to try to buck the system. I mean, that could happen in, in every department there is, and. So, I don't know. Thoughts, comments?
So what's the difference if we go ahead and exempt them, but then we take it by case by case? The money that we are allowed to be reimbursed for? What was this part you were just talking about, or?
Plus, they'd have, they wouldn't have their ability to, the two weeks, and then they'd have to have sick leave to cover them. Because you're basically, this law gives them the two weeks, the 80 hours.
Steve.
Right, but it's, it's a paid sick leave in addition to what they already have, but.
Yeah, but if they come to us and request, hey, this is a special circumstance, I wanted to follow this line, we can still do that.
If you exempted emergency workers, you mean?
Right.
But say one particular emergency worker wants to not be exempted. I think you're asking for a lot of.
You're asking for a lawsuit.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, since the federal government's come down.
Then we were asking for a lawsuit the way we were going to handle it before.
No, not really.
No, with no guidance, you're okay. Now you have guidance.
If I have guidance that tells me that, you know, look at each circumstance, and.
That was before they issued this mandate.
Well, this, this mandate is clear as mud, though, because it says your childcare.
It's not fun. It's not fun for any child person.
Your, whose place of care is closed or unavailable due. It doesn't say that you don't have other options, so do they have other options again? Could they have somebody? Are we giving them an option? Are we having a daycare and, you know?
So, I mean, I, so the thing about it is, is, so say law enforcement is, doesn't comply with the exemption, say we can exempt them, I mean, out of this order. So say they're not considered healthcare worker or emergency personnel, so, I mean, if one of his people, say a jailer, needed, their healthcare went away, he would be eligible for this based on this federal law. Well, if the same thing happened to an EMS worker and we exempted them, then they would not get this. And that's basically the time that they would have to stay at home and take care of their kid, up to 12 weeks, right? Or $12,000. So if you exempt them, one person could get it, and the other person may not. Which. I mean, where we're going to handle.
Well, no, because I'm exempting them under the whole thing, and if they come in and say, I've been ordered, I've got symptoms, I've got to stay home, is one thing different than one of them coming in saying, well, my kid's school is closed. Your kid's 15. Well, I got to stay home and make sure he's not doing anything crazy.
There are stipulations on that.
Uh, no, there's not stipulations. I know what I did when I was left alone at 15.
I'm not about daycares. I think the age is 14.
14.
12 or 14.
Oh, my God, that's a, that's even worse, 14.
That form. I mean, I can't stay home with my 17-year-old.
I don't like it either. I mean, I think we had a good plan to, to take it on a case by case basis and try to work with all our employees, and, but obviously, this changes things, and so. I just think it applies evenly across the board.
Yeah, I, I don't want to penalize our, the people that are out there on the front lines.
Well, there's two, because, I mean, we can argue it all day long.
I know, I, I.
You can.
I see it both, well, I see it both ways, but I, I just.
That didn't even stop me.
So what do you need?
So I need you to say that you're not going to exclude any of it. It's for all Cole County employees.
Can I just say that we're going to enact this for all Cole County employees?
Yep.
It's already enacted, right? So there's really no action need to be taken.
That's correct.
But I need clarification.
I mean, what they do have to do is vote to exempt certain employees, and they're not doing that, so it already applies across the board.
Okay.
We can, we can't vote not to exempt. It has to be a affirmative action or something, is what your motion has to be, so if we're not going to do anything, we don't have to have a motion not to do anything.
Okay, that's what it says.
Right?
Good enough.
Justice, too.
Oh, well, I want you to say.
I ran up on a lot of time to social, to isolate.
Okay, if you need something different, let us know.
Robert Rills.
Okay.
You didn't stay home at 15 and read the Bible? Okay, let's keep going.
At this time of year, when I was 15.
Rhodium incident management.
Yeah, we're already in incident management.
I never know what that is.
So this was a, oh.
Oh, that's a program that we have.
Yeah, software to track all of our, oh.
Well, any incident, that's right, matter.
Yeah.
Tornado, flood, coronavirus.
All our FEMA documentation, so.
The WEOC, is it? I'm not, I'm not sure. I didn't hear what one.
Yeah, rhodium incident management, something that EMS is using to track all their expenditures and their time and stuff like that, so. Is there not any paperwork on that?
Uh, he emailed it to us. Hold on.
That's not what Matt wanted us to sign, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Can you print that off?
I haven't seen it.
All right, let me print it.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to.
We. Move on to this last item and then.
Okay. Approval of LISO program application.
This is the 1033 program that we use with the military, or the government, sorry. It just enables us to continue this for another year.
Is this where I get my Black Lock?
Yeah, that's what it is, as far as you know.
You're not ready for a bet.
I got that. I'm thinking even, even an LCAC, you know, with, with Vince Ross having, he knows how to run those LCAC. We can take that thing when we have floods.
John, what is this? I mean, LISO, I mean.
It's the, it's the same program that we got the INRAP off of. It's some of the other military equipment that we can get that's been emailed. We're not, we're not expecting to get anything, but it just allows us to do it for another year.
It's just an application?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Osage County Sheriff got the, the, that vote that he plays out in the Osage, yeah.
We will not begin vote.
All right, I move that we approve the LISO program application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. I should print that up. Got anything else, Mr. Jeff?
There you go. Let's follow the others, too.
Okay.
I move that we sign the rhodium incident management agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't back them here this morning, but if y'all got questions about it, I mean, I talked to them about it. You talked to them. It's an incident management program that multiple agencies will be able to use, our health department will be able to use it and stuff, too, so.
Anything else this morning?
Oh, I talked to Kristen yesterday at the, she is saying we, we maybe need to send out an email to our department heads and elected officials and just say with sales tax in the, down the drain, that people, they need to live within their budgets or even reduce their budgets because there's not going to be any, any additional funds out there for salaries or red carvets or anything. So she just recommended maybe we want, we would want to do that.
What do you want it to say?
Don't spend any more money.
Should they spend less?
I'm just, I am passing on Kristen's.
Well, I'm not necessarily agreeing. I'm just asking what you want it to say.
Why don't you, why don't you throw it back at her and have her draft something up?
Tell them right now. Don't they all listen to us?
Okay.
In these meetings?
Okay, I will do that.
Well.
Have her draft something up, and then we can take a look. Have her draft something up, and then we can take a look at it, modify it if we need to or whatever, and sign it and send it out. I think everybody's probably very aware.
We had some emails from our esteemed collector and on some late payments and stuff, so did you wanna talk about that at all, or are our hands tied and we just have to send out the notices saying you're late, and if you are still late, you're still gonna have your interest on it? You said per statute that you're all's hands are tied. Y'all kinda were talking about that, but.
I'll need to see it later.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Yeah, the collectors have been discussing it for a couple of weeks now. Of course, there's nothing we can do because it's by statute unless the governor is an executive order or something like that. Most, and and I agree with this, I mean, the taxes are actually due December thirty-first, long before COVID nineteen was, at least in the United States. It's kind of a double-edged sword. Some are not sending them out, some are. If you don't, then the penalties and interest continue to grow every month. I I think people are gonna be upset when they get them, but I think at least they should know that that they still owe taxes and that the penalties and interest will continue to go up if they don't pay them.
Yeah, I think we need to let them know. I was just wondering if we can waive the fees, you know, for April or May. I mean, it's their own fault they didn't pay in the first place, but I didn't know if we could do that, and your email was very clear that.
I can't. I can't. I don't know if I doubt that you all can either, so.
So it's just whether we send the letter out or not?
If we go ahead and send the delinquent tax bills, yes, that's.
I think we need to.
Yeah, if you wait a month, if you know, if you try to wait until this is, then it's still, what, two percent a month is what it accrues, or?
Yes.
So it's gonna it's gonna accrue more, which is gonna make it better when when they do finally get the statement.
So do we have the ability to to waive some of the interest if if we so choose or not?
I don't, and I don't think you all do either. I mean, I don't know if anybody's approached the governor or legislature about doing that.
The only way that can ever happen is if there was some kind of legitimate error that occurred as to why this person, you know, like, for instance, if Larry, for some reason, their tax bill fell behind the copy machine or something like that.
Yeah, it's not the same as your driver's license, per se, that all of a sudden it's it's expiring in the middle of the stay-at-home order and we're closing offices, and so it's really difficult to come do it. This is something that should have been taken care of in December.
Right.
You know, before, so.
Well, even if they don't.
Oh, that was just a thought that.
They should know what to do anyway, so.
Correct.
Sounds like we just gotta send them out and.
Make sure you sign your name to it. I can see on these new ones, it's gonna say by order of the commission. You gonna put our pictures on there, too? Well, I just wanted to discuss a little. I didn't know if there's anything we could do, but I think we need to send them out, so.
Yeah.
I can put an additional letter with it if you.
A nice letter.
A nice letter.
Well, I'd say if they have to come in and they can't do it online or something, they have a problem, let us know. We'll see if we can work with them, but for the most part, everything can be done online these days, so. I mean, right now, you have to do it online if you're wanting to do any banking or the drive-through, so.
Well, we still have customers come in every day, pay them.
You do. That's I.
That's because we're lonely and we're isolated at home. We gotta get out.
You have you have customers down there just about every time I, it might just be one or two, but.
All right.
Okay, appreciate it.
That's all I really had.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Albie.
Anything else?
Nope. We caused enough trouble.
Argued long enough?
Yeah.
I move we stand in recess till four thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, when did we wanna put the next agenda? Thursday?
I thought they were wanting us to do something Wednesday.
Well, if we're gonna do it Wednesday, we need to get on the agenda now, depending on what time.